Calling the meeting to order, seven fifteen on May nineteenth. Current members Raj Kumar, David Fiemian, Christina Padoni. Absent is Charlie Wickes. Our agenda tonight are to review the meeting minutes from our April eleventh meeting.
It's actually April twenty first.
The twenty first?
First, and I just saw it online.
Okay, so the agenda should be updated to say the twenty first. Those many meeting minutes are in front of you.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as recorded on April twenty first, twenty sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes from April twenty first have been approved. Next item on our agenda is miscellaneous paperwork and mail. I do see that there are some documents, CBA documents, on forms that we were looking to review. The first are procedures to follow. Just if I remember correctly, we recently had these reviewed by...
Dick Eaton.
Dick Eaton.
When we first took over.
And there were no revisions at that time, right?
Yeah, there was. It was the comprehensive permit and package. It gives all the information as far as payments and stuff like that. We had that redone because it wasn't up to date. So he had redone it for us.
I don't see that one in here.
It's Form E.
Form E?
Yep.
That's the one I have here. So I don't see, this says revised two thousand and two.
It was the comprehensive permit rules and regulations.
January seventeenth?
June seventeenth of two thousand and thirteen.
Is that a replacement of Form E?
No, that would be...
That's that whole...
Just maybe the rules and regulations.
Yeah, that's just the rules and regulations.
I don't see really anything on this one. It really just seems like it's...
These can only be in applications, I think, you know?
Yeah.
It didn't put the instructions.
Should this anywhere on it note? Should the form anywhere reference the instructions?
No, that's a separate page.
Okay.
Just how to fill the things.
Application for amendment or modification of a permit or variance.
Petition for a permit, special permit, which is Form B, abiders and planning boards. Form C. Form D is the specifications for plans. And then E is the comprehensive permit. Requesting for finding or face in support of petition for comprehensive permit.
Those are all the ones that the county sent me, so hopefully that's it.
Now, these are all the ones, you can find these online, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they're on the same, you can find them online. They're also on the same pages where all the information is for the zoning board of appeals. It'll have all the forms and stuff on there, so you can find that.
Toby, on page, on the zoning board, let me see if there's one page before this. Approval forms and packet and general information. The next one, like contents, where it says, you know, twenty copies.
Yeah, that's all the instructions.
Is there anything on here for year end? I know we have like, you know, you need it by a certain period of time, so it's in the newspaper and running. Is there anything that should be changed for you on this part?
Are you going to add an end?
General information, procedure to follow, you know, fee schedule. It says variance, this up, yeah, this one right here, that's what I have.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking her though, because we need, it doesn't note, that's what I have up. So it doesn't note, you know, the amount of time you need to post it.
Yeah, maybe that would be a good idea, because that's in, I think that's just in the zoning bylaws, but it's not mentioned here as to when they have to get that to me.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because if you put it here, because we had a few incidents in the last, what, two years, if people came to us, you know, two days before it's something, and, you know, then we couldn't post it. So it might just be worth noting on this page, because it even says you need two sets of stamped envelopes. But just the date that you actually, you know, you need two weeks prior to that date. So what, I think there, could you just update on one of the paragraphs stating, you know, three weeks prior to, you know, sending out, mailing out, or posting, you, we need X, Y, and Z. So that way you have what you need to have it mailed out to the abiders and posted online and everything else. Does that seem fair?
Three weeks sounds good, because, yeah, it's ten business days.
Yep.
And then it is a holiday, it needs a back day, so three weeks is sufficient.
So it's a ten business days.
Well, that's when I have to get it actually into the paper.
Yep.
It's ten business days, so they should get the file in to me three weeks.
That gives you, okay.
Yeah.
So it has to be, so it has to be in the newspaper at least two weeks before the meeting.
It comes out to two weeks really, the ten business days, and posted on the town website, I think, posted with the town.
Okay, so let's use this example. If our meeting is on June sixteenth of next month, okay? You have a calendar?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so what, so what I would say, so give us the scenario. If somebody was going to submit something and they wanted to be, we would need to have a public hearing on the sixteenth of June, which is our next meeting. When would they have to have the information to you so that you can take all your work that you need to do to have the two weeks, so that we can get it onto the agenda for the sixteenth?
They really, well, the three weeks would be May twenty sixth.
Okay, now that Monday after May twenty sixth is a holiday.
Memorial Day, but the, let's see, ten business days would be, I mean, would be like Thursday, the second. It has to first appear in the newspaper.
Okay, so they would have to have it into you the week before that, so that you could get it in for the second.
They should, you know? I mean, I can sometimes, I can work with it if it's just a few days before, but if we're gonna have, you know, a hard and fast thing in there, it should be three weeks.
Okay, that's fine, I can...
And everybody can just follow that, you know, instead of, well, gee, it's a couple of days, maybe I can do it. If we're gonna have something in there, it should be three weeks.
Because it should be, it should all be taken care of, go through the newspaper and everything, before you make up the agenda for the sixteenth. Is that correct?
Yeah, the agenda will only be forty-eight hours before.
And also it goes to the town clerk's office.
Right, right. So it takes time to... So I would think three weeks is, you know, is sufficient.
Okay, so...
Do you...
No, I think, no, I was gonna say, that was my suggestion, was three weeks. I think that's great.
So if you could just write something up, you know, on that fact, and just, you know, kind of email it to Christina, and let her just kind of, you know, proofread it and then get it back to you. And then if you can get it, you know, as long as it's okay with her, just get it back to Karen and tell her that that would be the change.
She'll add it in the way she thinks it should.
Okay, does it sound okay?
Yeah.
All right.
And I think all of these are good. I mean, I don't see any problems.
I read through these a couple of times, and I really don't see any. Raj, did you see anything?
No, it looks fine, yeah.
Yeah, can you just let Karen know we don't have any edits to this?
All right, other than that addition.
I do want to mention that recently a full board member has been appointed for the ZBAA. Willard, Art Turner the third will be a full board member. And next meeting, our next meeting will be on June sixteenth at seven fifteen. I will say, Toby, to the best of my knowledge, it does have here associate member Paul Hennessy, but I believe he is not, no longer an associate member.
Right.
His term is up, yeah, so I would just, I would check back with Nancy, but I'm almost positive.
I'll check with Karen, yeah.
Yeah, because as far as I know, he didn't submit any paperwork to continue.
Okay.
So, because that's what we'd have to do, is, because like, that's what happened to me. I had to turn in and tell them whether I was gonna, wanted to stay on the board or not. And then they bring it up to the board of selectmen and they revote. And I go to all the selectman meetings, and I know for a fact that his name has not even come up.
All right, do you guys have any other questions before we motion to close?
No, before then, you know, there is one other thing. Have you seen the email? This is regarding the ninety-four North Main.
The what?
Ninety-fourth North Main Street.
Where, what email is that?
There was an email.
Couple of these things were kind of a while back, but we never had a chance to go through them. So, I mean, they're emails everybody should have gotten, but I just thought I would, you know, hand them over.
Yeah, so this one here, there is an email from a gentleman regarding hours of construction. So this one here wouldn't be from the, go to the zoning board. This should go to our building inspector as the zoning enforcement officer. So if you have this one, and I do remember seeing this one, we should get this in front of him. There was also another email regarding property that was sold in West Boylston. I did refer them...
Which one is that?
Seventy-one Temple.
Seventy-one.
I referred them back to the town to take the deed, to get their deed of their property and to find out the zoning classifications on it. Some of these are emails I did reply to, and that's why I kind of sent them off, just so you would, you would be aware of them. But in cases where we receive emails regarding someone questioning property lines or questioning zoning, those all go to the building inspector as the zoning enforcement officer. So if we send those to Cheryl or Bentley, it's not placed for us to respond or answer those. Thank you for consideration, I'm not sure.
That was the one that the guy was just, you know, saying that we didn't deserve to be yelled at at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
So, I mean, that's gratefully appreciated. I mean, I know he didn't agree with the decision that was made, but he did say he didn't want the board to know that they didn't deserve, we didn't deserve to be yelled at.
There was a mention of documents dropped off during a meeting by a member in town. These were documents that our town did not have in their possession. And it was before one of our meetings, and my response back to town was that I was not accepting... was that I was not accepting documents that were not held on facility and that our, that our, Kim Popewell had not stamped, and they were not accessible to us.
Can I just ask a question? Okay, it has something to do with this, okay? I know that we, well, you had made mention that at one time, that when a petitioner comes to before us, that we need to make sure that, you know, that they give us all the documents within a certain timeframe. And I know that, and I'll just use this as an example, when Wayne's weaponry at our last meeting, there was documents that both attorneys gave to us that night, you know? I don't know, there's gotta be some kind of a way. I, I don't, I'm not saying that we shouldn't accept them, or, I mean, I don't know. How should we deal with this in the future? You know, if we have a petitioner coming before the board with, you know, something that they want done, whether it's a special permit, a variance, or whatever, okay? When the board, you know, directs the petitioner that you have to have certain information by a certain time. I understand that sometimes, you know, there may be something that comes up at the last minute. And I believe that at that time, if that happens, then it's the discretion of the board whether or not to, you know, to look at the material and see if it, you know, if it's something that could have given, been given to us. Because it's very difficult to try to sit here and try to make a decision on something, you know, important. And everything that comes before us, I feel, is important. But to sit there at 7:15 and try to read a three or four-page document because you're trying to make a decision when it should be given to us, you know, at least, you know, a week prior to the meeting so that we can review it. If we have any questions, we can, you know, email the chairman and that he or she can say, okay, this is something that we need to discuss with, um, with town council, send it off to county council, get it back, information. I don't know what kind of a happy medium there is, but I think that's a policy that we need to stand by because of all these decisions that we have to make. It's very difficult, I can only speak for myself, it's very difficult for me to sit there and read an eight-page document the night of the hearing to try to make a decision on. I mean, I, I'm not the smartest person in the world, but, you know, I do need a little bit of time to comprehend things. And if I have questions, I want to be able to get to the chair and say, okay, I have some questions about this, this, and that. So I don't know, do you, do either you or Raj have any?
I think, you know, see, I allowed it last meeting, just because it is a very different kind of a meeting.
Right.
We do need to have that information. So, and also, you know, those two lawyers, if the one lawyer might have given it, you know, she would have not accepted it. Both gave it to us. So it's a, I would say like a special...
So we just, so basically, can we just say that we'll go on a case-by-case basis, and the board, the chair will just make a decision at that time on whether he or she feels that it's...
So I would say, not to have a conversation about that one, but I will say that I agree we would stand by it, and they should have their paperwork to us a week ahead of time. In that capacity, we were acting as an appellate board. A little, little different than what we were acting as right now. So procedures are a little different. But I would say, to make everyone's life more sane, I would say a week ahead of time, I would stand by that.
Okay.
And as you can see by some of the emails I requested, I, when I do receive those, I, I ask them not to bring it. That was a special occasion.
Okay.
And we were acting a little differently than we normally would act in the capacity of a ZBA.
Okay.
So, but I, I agree. So I think that anything additional, we usually do a week out. If you can't have us, that gives us a chance to, not only, I believe in transparency, not only us circulate it to the entire board, the town, other boards in our town, but also to anyone that's abutting it.
Okay.
It gives them a chance to react to it, but I agree, so I have no, no siding on that.
Well, I just, I just wanted to double-check with you. It just, you know, we, you set a policy, and I think it should be set up. If it's an extreme case, like this last case was, then I think it's the decision of the, of the chair to, you know, to decide on whether it's, you know, yea or nay on whether we accept it or not. So I just wanted to bring that up.
Nope, I think that's great. So Toby, for our next meeting on June 16th, start time 7:15. Items for that agenda will be the meeting minutes from this meeting. And we have one pension, petition? Petition for that meeting that'll be put on at 7:15.
Oh, so the petition will be at 7:15?
Should be a public hearing too.
Yep, be a public hearing.
You may be receiving another filing. I've had somebody call me a couple of times, and it was just very, it was very vague, but she had talked to the building office, and they want to file an administrative appeal about a decision of the building office. Then they were told supposedly by the town clerk that they needed a variance from us. So that hasn't come about yet.
Yeah, until they file something, um, we have nothing to act on. So the only thing we have is meeting minutes, public hearing on Big Daddy Realty Trust, the petitioner.
Does that mean that maybe Danica Patrick will be here? Isn't she part of Big Daddy? I'm just kidding.
Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Oh, I have, um, a little more.
There is one thing that you did forget, the rearranging the board.
I just didn't want to...
Hold on.
I just need to have it signed.
I think Mr. Fiemian want to be the chair.
Not really.
This is, um, it's a telegram.
So you'll be the clerk of the meeting, in that case?
Right here.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so Toby, and we also have the rearrangement of the boards. Every year we do a rearrangement. Last, it was last June when I became chair, and the rearrangement will take place this June 16th, so...
Will that come after the public hearing?
Yes.
Of the business?
That'll be the last thing that we do.
Yeah, towards the end of the meeting.
I never, um, oh, that was from the last meeting, and what happened was I had the law in the month on this.
Okay.
I had to redo it. And, you know, I guess we'll give you a copy of this one from tonight.
So what date do you want me to put down here?
Um, that it was, the date that it was accepted.
Yeah, last, last meeting, so it was 21st of April.
21st, or 21. And then this one is from tonight, and there's no changes, so.
Can you make sure Willard, Willard, Willard has all the paperwork from this evening?
Yes, yeah, he's got it, yeah, so...
I like the first name.
This one, this is for tonight?
I'm sticking with it.
Yeah, that's tonight.
What was on the agenda online, so William, that's what I had.
Are we all, are we all set up, settled as far as bills with VHB for 94 Main Street?
I was gonna bring that up again. I mean, how many times am I supposed to contact?
No, no, we're, we, don't worry about that, no. All right, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to adjourn. This must be a history.
All in favor?
Aye.